...the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we take a motion to open the meeting, considering that it is nine eleven, I would like to just offer a moment of silence for the victims. Thank you. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
Yes, I would.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Before we move into public input one, the first item on the agenda is a statement that I have prepared. Among the responsibilities as school board president, it is my role to set the agenda with the superintendent, conduct board meetings, and act as the voice of the board in meetings and in the media. Following our last board meeting, I received some very constructive feedback from several members of our community. I would like to address some of the concerns expressed regarding a few of the board actions taken on August 28th. Regarding process and the open meetings law, on August 14th, the board convened to executive session. As per open meetings law, the board may meet in executive session to discuss, among other things, matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person. As a result of that meeting with the board, I subsequently met with the superintendent to develop an agenda that included her recommendations for the board for discussion and vote in public at the next meeting on August 28th. The planning of that agenda was in no way designed to limit discussion or to reduce transparency. At the last board meeting prior to the start of school, the superintendent and I felt it prudent that the board be prepared to take action directly after an open discussion. What ensued was exactly that, an open, public, robust discussion followed by a vote. This board is committed to conducting its business and having its conversations in public, but is also committed to taking action in a timely manner when needed. What was missing was a detailed explanation of the finances for the benefit of the community, which may have created a few misunderstandings. First, the board only created one new position as per the recommendation of our superintendent. That position has been posted. All the other board actions addressed a change in title for current district employees who are taking on new and/or additional responsibilities in the district. Second, these changes in title and the one new position are within the approved budget and will not raise taxes. Thank you. As we mentioned during the last meeting, the board was provided a table similar to this one prior to the meeting. It has been redacted to share publicly, and we have added the dates for clarity. This table has been shared with our website, posted on our website, and also shared it with the paper. We adopted the budget on April 19th. As you can see, we received notification of these departures well after the adoption of the budget. This unexpected savings of almost $300,000 provided us with an opportunity to make several much-needed changes. Primarily, the job responsibilities of director of athletics, physical education, health, wellness, and supervisor of buildings and grounds has evolved into more than a one-person job. Historically, we have struggled to find the right balance between these two positions. We have had a full-time supervisor of buildings and grounds in the past, and the person who has been director of athletics has often been assigned to other responsibilities within the district. It is the recommendation of the superintendent that we move back to a full-time supervisor of facilities with a civil servant title of school maintenance crew leader. Not only will this person be responsible for properly maintaining now three buildings and two new grass fields, but also the long-term repairs of our buildings condition survey, as well as maintaining and implementing safety equipment and safety plans. As a result of having this one extra position, our director of athletics will be able to devote more time to student health and wellness, and our superintendent will redirect her time from building projects to curriculum and instruction. Secondly, this is a great opportunity to utilize the talents already existing in our business office to increase and manage shared services contracts, develop and implement a residency policy for the district, and oversee our food purchasing to promote health and wellness for our students. This is a significant change in job description and will result in expanded responsibilities, additional workout hours, hence the change in title and compensation. The last point of clarification that I would like to offer is with respect to the split of responsibility and compensation for position of PE teacher and director of athletics. Although the division of labor is a 40-60 split, the compensation is not. The individual will teach two classes and spend the remainder of the day attending to the duties of athletics wellness director. His compensation for the contractual day is calculated by the salary schedule negotiated by Tash. There's a stipend to act as compensation for hours spent during summer, breaks, nights and weekends, and any other time spent on these duties outside the teacher's contractual day. Aside from the particulars of the finances, much of what I have shared above is a repeat of the discussion during the superintendent's report on August 28th board meeting prior to the board voting. My hope is that financial table will reassure the community that we are doing, as Katie Graves would say, what's best for students, fair for adults, and what the community can sustain. I know we can't please all the people all the time, and I know that there are some that may have personal issues with the board. But the board understands that the community appreciates time to digest information prior to a vote, and moving forward, when the superintendent and I are creating the agenda, will make a conscious effort to do so whenever possible. I'm proud of the integrity and productivity of this governance team, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to learn, and appreciate the support of my fellow trustees and the community as I continue to become a better board president, leading a highly effective and transparent board that supports our superintendent and her administrative cabinet, and the best interests of the students and the community. At this time, I would like to move to public input one. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak for public input one?
Before you do that, could I please make a statement?
Sure.
Thank you, thank you so much. I have heard from many community members since our last board meeting regarding their concerns on how this board and district leadership are operated, including the attempts to limit discussion at board meetings and not address or answer key questions when raised. I have attempted to raise issues and enable discussions in our public meetings. However, the majority of my colleagues have frequently voted to limit this. Please know that I will continue in my attempts. For now, more than ever, transparency is critically needed. I feel it is appropriate to clarify some recent events. At the end of our public meeting on August 14th, the board voted to adjourn to executive session to discuss MOAs. In actuality, we discussed the creation of a new position and redefining and expanding other positions in the district. We did not discuss MOAs during this exec session. Had I been aware of this when voting, I would have corrected the motion. Going forward, I recommend to the superintendent and board president that these motions more accurately reflect the content of our exec sessions. In terms of the school maintenance crew leader position, the superintendent first discussed creating this position with the board in the August 14th exec session. Prior to this exec session, the superintendent had already approached an external candidate about the job. This was not the proper process to follow. There should have been a public discussion regarding the position before calling for a vote, where the public can view the board weighing the merits of this recommendation, and the public has a proper opportunity to provide feedback to the board. If and when the board agrees to create a new position, the majority of discussion should not first be in an exec session. Additionally, the redefinition of the athletic director position was not fully discussed and vetted publicly before the board voted. The following questions were asked, but were not answered. Why is a new .4 physical education teaching position needed? Why is a .4 teaching position paying $98,460, which if a full-time position would be $246,150? This .6 athletic director position is being paid at a fraction of that, at $18,000, a little over $18,000, and at full-time, that would be $30,500. Thirdly, the mental wellness and substance abuse of our two biggest health issues in the district is the position of director of athletics and wellness responsible for leading efforts in addressing these areas. I request that these questions be addressed publicly this evening. The only way that we can secure the trust and support of our school family and the community at large is if we are as transparent as possible. I am hopeful that tonight can be the turning point for us to do better.
Since Chris chose to respond, is there anybody else that would like to respond?
I sure would.
Go ahead.
It took me so much to be quiet in the last meeting. It was ridiculous, because I'm not very good at being quiet. So, I actually wrote from one to 100 twice on my paper just to be quiet, because I thought we made a mistake. Okay, so, but I also think that Diana just very eloquently, honestly corrected that in her explanation. So, the President of the United States gets up and does a State of the Union address, and he says, you know, before I was the president, I was all against sending more troops to fight. Well, now, all of a sudden, I'm behind the desk in the Oval Office, and I have to say that my opinion has changed. So, you put a budget together, all of us put a budget together, work, personal, school, and you think you've got it all on whatever the date was. I don't know what date that, April, I think you said?
April 19th.
April 19th. And then, and that's why this is up here. I think it's the key to the whole thing. And then, folks retire and free up money. And you say to yourself, okay, now, I have about $300,000 here, and some people would say the charge of this board is to be fiscally conservative and return that $300,000 to the taxpayers. But we had an issue, and I think the issue is that you had a person doing two jobs that was put together for some reason through people leaving and retirements and changes that really should have been two jobs. And so, now, you have money that will allow you to correct something that's wrong, and we did it after the fact, which looked as if we weren't being transparent. So, now, I'll say, when you sit behind the desk of the Oval Office in the superintendent's room, sometimes your timetable and the opening of school and correcting something that needs to be corrected can't be done before a budget's passed, and it has to be done before school opens, and has to get on an agenda to be approved, because when the bell rang, those kids came back in, and our priorities have to be that we're ready for them. And maybe that's not the timetable of the public. So, I'm hoping this explanation and these numbers explain truly why we did what we had to do. I wasn't happy that we had to speed it up, but I think we did the right thing for the kids. Thank you.
Go ahead, Alex.
I'd like to just comment as well and concur with what Diana said. Board actions on August 28th were publicly noticed. They were noticed by the public, and we know that because they were commented on on social media pages, and members of the public came here during a newly expanded public input one and commented on them. It was publicly discussed by the board, including some members who expressed opposition to the actions and were publicly voted on. So, I think that's the way these things are supposed to happen, and a lot of the criticism is misplaced. Now, one point that was made is that this should have been held open longer for more chance to the public to digest or think about it, and that's a fair point, and that's something that we all need to consider going forward. But at the same time, we also do need to balance that with the need to be efficient and productive, and with the school year starting and you're talking about positions that are going to be impacted. And I think Diana and Jenya have done an amazing job of making this board more efficient and more productive. And I would also just like to respond to and respectfully disagree with some of Chris's comments. You know, we, you're talking about public comment. We had a vote to expand public comment, and you and Susan voted against it and tried to limit it. According to published reports, you were one of the members on the prior board who tried to make much more significant decisions about a much more significant position in a closed-door executive session. And when that came out, you were apparently so angry about it that you tried to spend $20,000 on an investigation into leaks at the school board. And so, I think it rings a bit hollow to say that the concern is about costs or transparency. I think those things are important, and I think we have an obligation to do that. But I think that that happened here. And again, keeping things open for a longer time is something that we ought to think about, but needs to be balanced with the need to make decisions at appropriate time.
Anybody else like to comment?
I'll just defer to your statement.
Okay.
Sure, I support your statement as well. And I also would like to add that during our business meetings, I'm happy that we are going to more of an agenda-based approach, where really, we are dealing with the items that are placed on the agenda. Now, as for like what you said, Alex, it was a public vote, and it was our time to discuss it. I personally supported the decision, so I didn't have much to add to it. I think that these positions or this position and the moves were something that the district needs, and this is a budget-neutral decision, so I supported it. We're increasing the business of the department. We are increasing our shared services, and you know, so we need a little bit more there, and so I supported it, so.
Anybody else want to comment?
Yeah, thank you, Diana. I really appreciate your statement, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, if mistakes are made or there's criticisms, that we're willing to look at that and make adjustments if need be and hear that. And also, I appreciate sort of the respectful tone too I hear around the table even when people disagree, because I think that makes a big difference in meetings. I wasn't here at that last meeting, as you know, and I had sent a letter with some concerns, and there was some issues of letters, so that's why it couldn't be read. And I do understand the issues with, you know, preparing for the kids for the school year, but I do hope that we can find some time soon to have a greater discussion on some long-term questions related to some of these decisions. One is that I understand that, you know, our enrollment this year is up, but I've seen long-term projections saying that it's supposed to go down. And so, if that's the case, and we're adding to the administrative team, you know, are we adding positions when we really, it's much easier to add them than it is to take them away? And so, I just think in that context, are we asking those questions well enough? Two is in terms of the cost savings. There was a cost savings that was presented, and so, this was one opportunity. Did we vet it enough? I don't know in terms of what other needs were there, or I don't recall where we did have a discussion about whether that should go back to the taxpayers. And while it might seem like a small amount of money, this point, it does seem like changes happen, we have additional monies, somebody over here seems to do an amazing job, and so there always never seems to be a problem. And so, if that's the case, is it that maybe are we taxing at too high a rate? Should we have explored some kind of rebate? I don't know. The answers to those questions, I'm just saying, should we be raising them and talking about them, and I hope that we will. Some of the pieces with the positions honestly didn't make sense to me related to some of the stuff that Chris raised. I know you explained it to me, I appreciated that last week. It just still doesn't make sense to me, and so, if it's not making sense to me as a board member, I can only imagine that the public is equally confused. And a lot of that has to do with a position that it appears that the responsibilities go down, yet the salary stays the same, or where if you look at your very chart here, we have an elementary PE teacher retired, we hired a new elementary PE teacher, and yet here we have an additional role for more PE teacher piece. So, it just doesn't necessarily make sense. And then, in terms of the wellness piece, you know, I think that is something that we should also have more of a discussion about in terms of whether we're meeting, what that looks like, whether we're meeting that. And my concern there is that there is a difference between fitness and wellness. And so, while somebody might have tremendous skills in the fitness area, they might not necessarily have all the skills that's required in terms of wellness. And our community just had yet another overdose, death of a former student here. You know, I just wonder how many more this is going to continue to happen, and we had raised last year in the goal setting, those issues were the number-one priority, and I don't know that we addressed that at all. And so, I think we really need to ask ourselves the tough questions as to whether we are, whether we're doing enough in that area, how we can do better. And then, the other piece I just wanted to raise is, you know, when this board, again, I was not on it at the time, you know, the whole Stella Maris thing came up, the previous board and the superintendent made claims, at least to my recollection, to the public that the new building is only going to mean two more people hired, a janitor and a security person, and no other personnel. And it seems like now we are getting more personnel, and some of the reasons for that are, oh, well, we have three buildings now, when at the time that we were introducing that building, it was, oh, no, 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 we're going to be able to handle it within just the two more people. So, it's those kinds of questions that I think are, become legitimate, and then the community says, wait a minute, you told us X, and now you're giving us Y. And so, I think we need to do a better job of drilling down and understanding that and making sure that if that's what's needed, that we're making the proper case, and if there are other needs that we're missing, what are they? How do we do that? And if, you know, we've got to terminate taxpayers, that we do that too, because I get very concerned about that. I think in recent years, we've had a strong economy, the Wall Street has done well, and that means certain things for certain pieces that we owe in terms of the other end on benefits. That can turn on a dime, and we've seen it happen in this community, other communities. And so, are we ready if that happens? And so, it just makes me nervous when things are feeling uncomfortable and we spend, spend, spend. I just want to make sure we're being cautious and careful and frankly, treating the pocketbook like we would all want it treated, and so, and that is with great care. So, that's it, but I do appreciate your statement, and I also appreciate Chris's and the other comments that have been made, and I hope that we can all work together to do better on that. And then, just one last statement, Alex, I just have to correct the record on this. If you go back to the videotape, you will see that I'm the one who raised the issue about changing public input one, and I don't know why you keep trying to say in public that I was against it. I was absolutely for making it more flexible and having people be able to talk to any item. I was the one who raised it. The reason I then stopped short is because I did think there should be a time limit. You all disagreed, the majority of the board disagreed, and there's now no time limit on public input one, and that's fine in these meetings. Let's see what happens moving forward. But to say that I was against, you know, expanding public input one is just not correct, so I just want to correct the record on that. Other than that, thank you.
Just a very good comment. Go ahead.
I think that one of the, where we faltered was time for reflection, and I think that Diana addressed it, but I want to reemphasize, is that we do have a nice procedure that's worked over the last three years, where we have an educational meeting, which is filled with presentation, and then we have a business meeting, which is when we take action. And we do have some presentations during a business meeting where folks may ask for additional information, but because we do have this beautiful pattern that we've already established, I think moving forward, where we missed our mark was presentation, but we didn't give our community and some of our board members time for reflection. And I know I need that myself, because I don't know everything. I like to spend my time listening to our community, to our staff members, to the Board of Education, and then going, let me get you some more information. And sometimes, for some individuals, that's endless. That can never be enough information, so we do need to know when to stop and make a decision. But I think the pattern that we have, where we have one educational meeting, and if those points can be raised, that we're going to be making a change, that we're thinking about, it can be anything, implementing a program, hiring, a change in our budget, something that looks like it's looming in the future, because we can have things coming down from state ed that we may need reflection on. Those things get presented, as many questions can be generated that we can answer, and then at the next meeting, we can take action. But perhaps during that time, any additional questions that are generated from the board, from the community, from our district can then be answered yet again, and if we feel like there's not enough, the will of the board can still table that action so that more information can be generated. So, you can have a very productive, you know, Board of Education, but that it also is doing what is best for our children, fair for the adults, and what the community can sustain.
Diana, since something was specifically said about me that was inaccurate, I'd like the opportunity to clarify, as Susan had the opportunity.
Oh, I will give you that opportunity, but before I do that, I would like to just correct the record as well. On August 14th, we did talk about MOAs in executive session. Those were the MOAs that showed up on the next agenda, so that was the discussion in exec that meeting. The other thing that I just wanted to clarify, there was, I know I said it in the statement, but maybe if I can give a little more narrative to the division of labor and the compensation. People keep trying to apply the proportional numbers mathematically to the salary, and that's not the way it works. Frequently in districts, if somebody takes on a leadership role, then they will get a stipend to cover work that they do in that leadership role outside of the school day, and if they're a classroom teacher, they will still be on the same salary schedule as all the other teachers. They just may be relieved of some of their duties so that they can do that other thing. So, the 60-40 split of labor, that math does not apply to the salary. It's during the day, it's teacher's salary, and then after the contractual day is what the stipend is for. Just to, again, reiterate the clarification on that. Go ahead, Chris.
As Susan pointed out, I too was in support of expanding and opening up input one to non-agenda items. I agree that there should be some time limit, just based on my years of experience and how likely that can be. But I never voted against having it be under those terms. I was just objecting to it being completely open-ended, because I respect the fact that we have personnel here and need to be back very early in the morning. And secondly, I never advocated for spending $20,000 for investigation. I had suggested that there be, and advocated for investigation, because there had been a violation of confidential information that was appropriate to cover in exec session. So, it's not in conflict with my statement tonight. And I hope that my questions that I did raise today, that were raised the last meeting, get addressed tonight, because I think that would be helpful just to create greater understanding of what the board did at the last meeting. I don't think we talked about why .4 needed to get added to the staff.
Could you want to add something?
Yeah, when our former elementary PE teacher left, he did many things outside of his scope. I don't know if Tash and you would be that happy about it, but he covered, always covered recess, he covered, they don't have duties, and he did the bus duties. There was a number of things that he did that were beyond his scope. So, this, by him being able to pick up physical education class, and in New York State, if a teacher covers recess and has curriculum that aligns with the recess, then the recess can be considered physical education class, which we are blessed that we don't always have to use that, but it may become necessary. So, the child has to be picked up for an occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy. We then may be able to utilize that. It gives us some flexibility in our scheduling. So, that we blessedly had with our former physical education teacher, and we didn't, this is able to, by having the new, having these two new slots provided for that flexibility.
So, they were, the two additional, the .4, which is two additional slots, right? right, two additional classes, sometimes when we point four, they don't realize it means two classes. He was serving as a, as a, as a recess?
He was, he was, you know, when I, I'm trying hard not to talk about individuals.
Right, but the position itself?
He was teaching five classes and then doing extra.
Okay, because recess-
He was doing above and beyond.
Right, I'm just asking only because I'm trying to understand, if it's two more slots, it's replacing someone who was doing recess for one of them, right?
Let me start again. Our former PE teacher was teaching five classes and then doing extra things.
Right, no, I understand that. Five classes is the full-time position that was replaced by someone else. The extra things, was that teaching other classes, or was it things like recess? Because I know recess can also be overseen by a TA or a monitor.
But then it's not considered physical education, so we can't, we don't have the flexibility. So if a special education student needs occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, they cannot be removed from physical education class for that, because it's mandated, they have to have that time. So now our new physical education teacher is picking up one of the recesses, our new, Mr. Brown was picking up another one of the recesses. So those now can be counted as physical education, if need be, should one of our special needs children need that flexibility in their schedule. He's also teaching a physical education class as well.
In the elementary school?
In the elementary school.
And who taught that class before?
I think the second one is real high school.
No, no.
You need to get your advisor?
No, our new physical education teacher is doing four classes plus a recess, again, to give us that flexibility, because we have multiple recesses.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this time, I'd like to move into public comment, Public Input One. Come on up. Please keep your comments to three minutes, direct your comments to the board president.
I thought I just heard someone say there was no time limit for-
No, there's no time limit for Public Input One, but the individuals have a three-minute time limit.
Oh, okay.
So to sit down and come back up.
I wasn't going to recite, you know, the Gettysburg Address, but I misunderstood that.
It's okay, just to recognize-
My name is Marya Passada.
I need, I'm going to finish reading these points, and then I'll let you go. Sorry. Please do not discuss personnel or individual students. Know that the board will listen, but may not necessarily respond or discuss, and note that you'll be, you're being recorded. Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I stood here a few weeks ago and raised some questions and some concerns about issues, and I'm happy to hear that some of those were acknowledged tonight and perhaps move in a different direction. I echo what Susan said about wellness and, and fitness, and I urge that our Director of Health and Wellness connect to the program called Safe and Sad Harbor, which is a federally-funded drug and alcohol prevention program. To date, there's not really been a connection, and we do have money for five years, we're in the second year, and perhaps extend for another five years. So that would seem to be a natural, and since there's more time available for that person to do so, I would urge that that happened, because drug and alcohol prevention in our community is just exactly what we have the funding for. I think there's still a disconnect between issues that can be discussed in executive and things that need to be discussed in public. I know that people and cannot be discussed in the public, but the creation of positions is something that I do believe belongs in the, in the public. And the, the back and forth between full-time and part-time, you know, custodial and athletics, I've been through this, I've been here in the community about 25 years, so I've seen the changes come and go, and I realize that things do change. But this hasn't come up as an emergency. This should have been a result of some good planning, that if we need to split the positions and have two different positions, then we should have heard about that in the planning and the presentations for the budget. There really was none of that. So now we get a windfall of money, that doesn't mean we go out and spend it. You know, as trustees, you represent all of us, you know, I'm a senior citizen taxpayer. So the questions that get raised here, perhaps those should be raised more, more quickly and in public by the trustees themselves, rather than feeling like we have to challenge something. But that's all good, part of good planning is to figure out, what do we need, where do we need it, how will we pay for it, how do we present it to the community? And there have been several disconnects, and they, you know, they still trouble me. The Point Four phys ed teacher, I've heard it explained 16 different ways now, and I was a principal, and there was no request for a Point Four phys ed teacher, by either of the principals. And so it still puzzles me why we are actually adding Point Four phys ed teacher to the roster when we had no request for it, and if they don't get, make a request for it, then there's not an urgent need for it. So I would ask us to be more efficient in our planning, so that then what you're doing with all your good intentions is actually something that has been planned for. Emergencies happen, none of these things were emergencies.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Anybody else for Public Input One? Come on up.
And thank you, Diana, for your explanation and your letter that you read. There's just a couple of things that I still find challenging. If you go back to the athletic director's emails out public, which was my first cue, I have emails, of course, in being on the board, where that is signed as athletic director and buildings and grounds, but not on the 16th. The 16th physical education email came out as athletic director, not buildings and grounds. So, that was my first cue. Two days later, it was reversed back. So to sit here and say that we had a robust conversation, we get, we have the superintendent, Ms. Graves did a presentation, and changes that the public asked you to discuss and table, so we could have a robust conversation. Phones were texted, heads were down, evil were rolling their eyes. It's not personal, it's just not what you did. There was no discussion, it was voted on. We saved $300,000 on August 14th, you spent 250. So for me, A plus B does not equal C. So my, my request is to be honest, to just be honest. It was in this executive session, things happened, we decided the money's here, let's move. Unfortunately for me, it's all top-heavy. I don't have a whole lot going on for kids. We haven't discussed middle school IB since I failed that in a meeting, and that's never been brought back. That's a program that I would have liked to see, $250,000, have a robust conversation. That the middle school kids could be getting. Not a 40% increase because of a job that somebody's already been doing, and repay them more money because they did their job. Doesn't make sense. Enrollment, when you guys talk about enrollment tonight, please understand, we have not had pre-K involved in our enrollment for many years, it's recent. So do not use that as your guideline in saying that enrollment is up. You need to remove those, or say that since then, this is the difference, because there is a difference. It's always been K through 12, now it's pre-K through 12. And again, I'm just going to say that it's not personal, it's strictly, when you've been on the board for as long as I was, you pick up things, you see things, and a board that is saying, I'm transparent, and this is what I want to do, that's kind of what I, as a public taxpayer, with a child still in district, and I'm going to be there, respect the Board of Education. So again, Point Four PE teacher, somebody explain it, please. Thank you.
Ah, perfect. Anybody else for Public Input One?
Hi, good evening. My name is Bridgette Collins Stewart, and I just wanted to make a statement, and that is, to me, it makes good sense that the athletic director is focused on athletics. It does bother me that there would be a split between buildings and grounds and athletics. Those positions don't seem to make good sense to me. You know, I wasn't at all the board meetings, so I don't want to comment on how it should have come about, I just want to say that I'm glad that it did come about, because I think it's an important change to make. And for a long time, I wondered why it was split that way anyway, it just doesn't make good sense to me. And I think also, knowing the work that's done by athletic directors, there is so much involved beyond the school day, that I think, when you, when you work in a school, as I do, you come to understand that, and I appreciate that the position requires that kind of focus. And then I also want to say, I'm not often here, but I would be interested to hear a little bit more about middle school IB, because I have a seventh grader, and I'd like to hear a little bit more about the thinking behind that, if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for Public Input One?
Hi, my name's Kate Lawton. Thank you very much, Diana, for your statement. I, this is completely off-topic from this evening, I wanted to ask you about middle and high school advisors, our parent advisors and our elections. I don't, I'm new to the district again, and I don't know how that works. How do the kids run? When do they run? Do they run in the spring? Are there elections? When do the advisors get appointed? Do they have to be approved by the board? And do they get a stipend? And do you want to?
Go ahead.
So the Student Council elections, which are grades nine through 12, high school, I think you're referring to, they took place last spring, and interested candidates were required to videotape a speech, and then those speeches were shown to students in the high school who then voted. Class elections generally take place in the fall. I believe there was one class last year, Mr. Diana, that did vote for their class officers in June, but the other three classes are voting this fall.
Voting for previous videotaped?
No, no, the class officers are, it's a little bit, there's student government-
Right.
-which is student government, and then there are class officers that are just voted on for, to be a class officer, it's a different deal.
Okay, and how do you learn about this?
You would go to the Student Council advisor, who hasn't been appointed this year yet, because no one's come forward from the unit, the teaching unit, that is, and the class advisors, all of which will be appointed at the next Board of Education meeting.
Okay, so there are teacher advisors, and they're appointed.
Yes.
But they have to want the position. So they have to, they have to come to you and say, Mr. Nichols, I'd like to be the advisor for the senior class or the sophomore class, and-
Correct.
Okay, and do those positions always get filled by TASH, by our teachers?
The contract states that if someone from the unit doesn't come forward, then the position is reposted an additional time. And then if that position is not filled after that second posting, it goes to a committee that's in existence, which is comprised of an administrator and a TASH representative. They go out one more time, and if no one comes forward from TASH, then the district is free to hire someone from outside the unit.
Okay, and do we have boundaries around dates, so that the kids aren't, aren't being left behind with things like car washes that happened this weekend, and-
Yes.
What are the-
So the goal is for all of these appointments, or as many as we can get, to be made on the 14th. Right now, homecoming, I believe, is scheduled for the 11th and 12th, roughly, and the themes for homecoming are going to be announced on the 29th of September. So if we have someone in place by the 14th, that's, that's more than enough time.
Okay, but the board has to approve, I think it's the 18th, right?
Is it the 18th?
Eighteen, fourteen. Am I even on the eighteen? Does the board have to approve the advisors? Because there's a stipend involved.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's a week from today, is the board meeting to appoint the advisors?
And the, and the advisors have to come forward?
Yes.
That's the-
Is that by grade level?
Yes.
Yes, and then the Student Council person that also has to come forward, right?
Yes, well, what happens is all the co-curricular positions that are listed in the contract are put out to the members of the teaching unit in June.
No, I know, it's me being ridiculous. There's four grades in the high school, so there would be four appointed folks, teachers, assuming, that would be the advisors for nine, 10, 11, and 12.
It's actually six, it's actually six through 12.
It's six through 12, and then there would be one person for high school student government?
Correct.
Is there a middle school student government?
There is.
So there's two people that have to come forward?
Yes.
And you put, and the student government, is that, is there someone in each grade representing their grade for the student government of the building?
The, the officers are elected for the entire high school and for the middle school, respectively.
So is there anywhere on the website that describes those two things? You've got your, your by grade level, and then the school-based? So if parents wanted to encourage their children, they would know what's available and how, you know?
Not on the web.
Is that, is that on the website?
Yeah.
The student government?
No, you know, it's, it's pretty pub, we do a terrific job of middle school, but in high school, it's not there.
I don't know what it is, that's why I was asking. If student, information about student government is there, or class, you know, class officers. If it isn't, perhaps it might be helpful, so that, you know, if we're hearing from one member, there probably are other members in the public that would find it useful to share it on the website.
Is there anybody else for Public Input One? No? All right, at this time, we'd move into the educational part of the meeting. First item on the agenda is the initial review of SAD Harbor's enrollment for 2017-18.
Everybody put your glasses on.
Gosh.
I know, it gets bigger as I go along.
Should we turn the light? It's kind of hard to see the numbers on there. Or maybe it's just my old eyes?
No, it is, this is a small PDF, it gets a little bigger on the subsequent ones. And as, as was pointed out, we do have it broken out kindergarten through 12th grade, because that's what New York State Department of Education requires. And then we do have our pre-K below that. So the total district numbers are at the very bottom, are not what New York State Department of Education looks at. It only looks at for, for what we lovingly refer to as our BEDS Day, which is our Basic Educational Data Systems, is the K through 12 enrollment. And we did go up by 22 from last year, but I say that very gently, because families move at this time of the year, they make decisions, they're getting transferred. You know, it's just a, it's just a time of the year that tends to be challenging for families. I quoted the newspaper recall, that I said, in my 17, 18 years in administration, in my 30 years, I used to be the home economics and health teacher, it was not uncommon working with preschool and kindergarten parents, that they would think, I'm going to keep my children home, because they can choose to keep their children home. And then they would watch their friends take their children to pre-K and kindergarten and go, I'm not going to keep my children home. What am I thinking? I'm going to send my children to kindergarten. So, you know, conscious choices are made. People move, they, also, we may not have numbers that, folks that have moved out of the district and haven't let us know yet, because we hold on to them. So these numbers may change, but we've done a pretty good job of vetting them. So lots of phone calls have been made, especially in our kindergarten, pre-K through 12th grade, are you going to come, are you going to be here? So I feel pretty confident that our numbers have gone up. So we saw K through 12, an increase by 22 students, and in our pre-K by 10. I tried to do a little disaggregation of that data, but before I do that, it's, if you, I have the pages in front of you, but I did a little number, so you could jog down by color on the second sheet, so that you could see the grade sizes as they move. So we did have a small pre-K last year, and we do have a small kindergarten this year. Again, that could change, that enrollment could go up. Our, our enrollment tends to be in that 55 to 65, you know, grade level, if you look down through. So it would not be unusual- so that you could see the grade sizes as they move. So we did have a small pre-K last year and we do have a small kindergarten this year. Again, that could change, that enrollment could go up. Our, our enrollment tends to be in that fifty-five to sixty-five, you know, grade level if you look down through. So it would not be unusual for, to see that kindergarten number go up or stay exactly at, at the point it is. We do have some parents that do homeschool. So they, they keep their children home for a number of years and then send them as they get closer to middle school. So this gives you an idea, and I'll take questions at the end. But we, and I can go back to any of these slides, but I think I may answer some of your questions as I go through. So I tried to color code them so you could see second to third, fourth to fifth, so the first stream is the, or the first column is our children from last year, our students from two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and then our students from, for, from September eleventh, from today. And you can see those movements. There were some questions about tuitioning in and I tried, didn't give you by grade level because I try and maintain folks confidentiality because I think we don't need it, weed out who they are. But we had twenty-nine tuition in students last year that has moved up to forty-two, which is an increase of thirteen, which proportionally is rather high. Increased tuition numbers include five students from private pay. Those are parents that, that pay for the students to come to Sack Harbor. So that was an increase of, from thirteen students to eighteen students. And then eight more students from schools, area schools that paid for the students to come. So that was an increase from sixteen to twenty-four. Now I'll take, disaggregate that a little bit more so you can see where those students are coming from. So I did put the tuition, private pay and the tuitioning from, from the area schools together because I'm trying really hard to provide confidentiality for these families as well. So pre-K through fifth grade, there's twenty-three students, so you can see where these are broken out. One of the positive things that I can add about tuitioning, when, for folks to tuition in, they do tend to stay with their district because the children start joining sports teams. The children start being part of clubs and organizations. They form friendships. So when we do have a tuitioning in at an early age, you do get a certain level of loyalty that goes up through. Our middle school, there's ten, and our seven, in our nine through twelve, there's nine. A note from the fiscal side, I also have the tuition rate, so pre-K is seven thousand fifty-seven. That's a half-day rate, they're only with us for a half a day. Our K through sixth rate is eighteen thousand three hundred and forty-eight because it costs us less simply because they're with a singular teacher. Seven through twelve, they're with more teachers, so it's, that rate is a little higher. And a note that area schools sending special education students to Sack Harbor schools are billed for related services, educational services, at a tuition rate equal to those actual costs. So we keep track of all those costs and we bill it back to the area schools and then they, they reimburse us for those costs. And just a note that the deadline for our final student, student enrollment or BEDS, Basic Educational Data Systems, is October fourth. It's usually the first week in October of every year. New York State Department of Education picks that date. And that's when we do a head count for not only our children, but for how many computers we have, how many staff members we have, how many teaching assistants we have. We give them all that data and that becomes their marker for everything. So everybody's counted. So now, any questions? Yes?
I'm sorry because I can't see. Go back to your first slide, tenth grade. Just use that for me as an example.
Yes.
There were seventy-nine children in the tenth grade on the BEDS Day of last year.
Yep.
Right now, there are eighty-four enrolled in the tenth grade?
Yes.
So that would mean it went up five.
Yes, but if you look at the tenth grade going into eleventh grade, it stayed exactly the same.
Well, that's what I wanted, then I'm confused. Because the seventy-nine on the bottom stayed to seventy-nine.
Yep, so that grade level kept the exact, for the tenth graders that rose into eleventh grade kept the same number of students. But the ninth graders that rose into tenth grade actually gained two more students. How am I doing? Let me go to the next slide.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out because if they were in, eighty-two of them in ninth grade and there's eighty-four of them now in tenth grade.
Tenth grade, yep.
But there were seventy-nine of them last year. So did we somehow go from seventy-nine to eighty-two last year after we counted them the first time? Yes.
So they're different grades.
Ninth grade into tenth grade.
Ninth grade into tenth grade, we gained two students.
Yeah.
And then tenth grade became eleventh graders and then?
And that stayed flat.
That stayed flat, yes.
But if there were eighty-two ninth graders last year and it fell to seventy-seven?
No.
That's why I'm confused.
Yeah, that's why I couldn't follow.
I gotta go this way.
They, they rose to, I probably shouldn't have done the numbers going down.
I got it, okay, all right. I got it, okay.
And one of the standouts that I am hearing, and I'm not, I have, I, I don't go back decades, but we have ninety-three currently in sixth grade, which I am told by one of our staff members in the high school office, that that is the highest number going back to when her daughter went through Pearson and that's going back to two decades ago, right? Can you think though? Yeah, I think it's two decades ago. So that's, that's one of the biggest classes. And right now, we're doing well, we're holding steady with that. But that's, that's one of the biggest, that is one of the biggest cohorts to come through Sack Harbor schools.
So sixty-three children should graduate this year?
Yes. Well done.
Okay, I got it. Nichols, make sure all sixty-three get out, okay? No child left behind. I'm going to count those heads.
Any other questions on the moment? Go ahead.
Two quick questions, please. Can you just explain what ungraded means? I mean, I'm making assumptions, but I'd love to hear explanation.
Sure. Ungraded is a child that's in a multi-age classroom. So the, so the class will be, will have, will, we don't put a grade on them because developmentally, we know that their needs don't place them. So the children could be five, six, seven years old or seven, eight, nine years old. So we put them in a multi-age classroom because we're focused not on meeting grade level, but helping them developmentally to meet their mark as fast as possible.
So is that more like the special needs?
Yes, it would be a special needs classroom, right?
Okay, thank you.
And we may eventually grade them because they'll, but we're focused on getting their, their development up. So whatever their challenges are.
Okay, I was just curious. And then the other question I had was just about the kindergarten enrollment, or should I say drop in enrollment? Have we ever seen a drop like that in kindergarten before?
Um, well, I'll remind you again, kindergarten's not a great one for your place better because parents have the option to not bring children to kindergarten.
No, I understand, but in the past, I don't recall seeing a drop like that. Maybe not, no.
That's small, that's three-section, right, Matt?
If you look, if you look at the, say like K through, you could probably go all the way up to, well, K almost up to ninth or tenth. You know, our trend had been, for a while, we were in the seventy to eighty range. So that is a drop. I mean, if I, if I think way back, we did have classes, you know, in the sixties at, at point in time.
This is forty-seven.
And then, you know, that's a, it's a dip, but.
And do we have any ideas to why? I mean, I'm just getting, trying to get a sense, is there, is there a demographic issue that's going on out here or? Right, I mean?
That's, that's a small question.
Observationally, we have seen, you know, family, families moving, move out at times in the year. That has been a contributing factor, I'm sure.
It didn't rain as much.
A common trend around wrong parents in Disney too is two years of pre-K. This is a new thing I'm seeing a lot of my friends doing.
What was it, Diana, when you started?
Two years of pre-K.
But two years of pre-K was going on when my kids were there and then, and then they did kindergarten. You know, I mean, they were doing pre-K.
Well, these kids are doing pre-K when they're over five.
Oh, I see, okay, okay. So they're staying in a private, okay, got it, all right. So it'd be interesting to see that number the next year, what happens there.
Yeah, and that, I'll just add, that, that is something I've noticed over the years, that from K to one.
Okay.
There's almost always an increase because, I think that Katie was mentioning, if you get settled in a pre-K environment and you're, you're close with the families, you sometimes make a choice to stay for kindergarten and then join a school.
I would do that tomorrow. It's cheaper than a gap year when they get out of high school.
Any other questions?
The numbers seem to bear it out. If you look at the other grades, that those seem to be slightly increasing with the exception of one grade.
Go ahead, Chris.
In nineteen eighty-one, I graduated with fifty-seven students.
And last year's graduating class was fifty-seven, which is only ten students in that kindergarten class, so.
Another question?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you so much, this is really helpful. I requested this get on the agenda and you pulled it together really quickly, so I appreciate that so much. The first chart that shows these numbers, and I like the way you did, you color coded it because for my head, that would clear it up. Are these numbers the numbers that the district pays for or the number of students that are actually in our building? Because those are two different sets of numbers, right?
I can't disaggregate the students that, that, these are, these are the students inside and outside our building. These are our students.
Right.
Right.
So those that, what's the total number of students that are part of our district that don't go to school in our building?
That would take some disaggregation.
Okay, I didn't know if that was what you do.
We actually put on, put on buses and leave.
Yeah.
It's a very, very small number, but.
It's just a handful.
Yeah.
Okay. And in terms of the tuition students, what was, is forty-two the highest we've had? I thought a few years ago it was, was close to fifty. Do you know that?
I don't know that number.
You know that, all right. And that kind of brings up a broader request. That, because it's great to have this. Historically, you know, we usually get this every year. I mean, and most of the years I've been on the board, we've got it, but they usually go back three or four years so you can really see trends. I can send you what we've had previously, but, but for that and for tuition students, when you have three or four years, it's much easier to talk about trends than just one year over another. So as we look at this data, if we can, you know, it's not too much work if we repeat the kind of data we got in the past where you can really clearly see trends. I think it might be helpful for us.
Well, I'd recommend that we, we do it, and if you probably have had this done, is to do it around after BEDS Day because otherwise, because if anyone grows back and refers to this, they'll say, "Well, we didn't tell, we didn't tell the truth." Because when you go and look on, because we have a great data website now that our commissioner has been fully behind, and you're going to look at the numbers and go, "Those numbers don't lock in." So really, this should be done after BEDS Day.
I agree a hundred percent. And then maybe those, well, the numbers are locked, then we can look at it once again to Susan's point there. Are we have trends here that should be informing some of our decisions?
Any other questions? On the roll? Excellent. Should we move on to that? Mr. Nichols, do you want to, or let me start.
Arena.
Yep.
All right, both of you?
At the podium. Good evening, everyone. So, so this evening, we, as administrators, are going to present some of the data that we look at to assess how programs are going in school and also assess how students as individuals are doing with regards to those curricula. It's important to just preface that what, what we're presenting in many cases tonight represent singular data points and they comprise the entire, you know, data source that we would use to determine adjustments to both program or adjustments to an individual student's program in school. So I'll start off with the, this is the language arts, English language arts Common Core assessment data from this past spring. For those that aren't familiar, most are, but all three through eight students are presented with a Common Core assessment from New York State to assess how they are doing in relation to those Common Core standards. And that's presented to all students in New York State. The tests are given in the spring in language arts as, as well as in mathematics. So here you can see from beginning back in two thousand eight, but if you look at the top of the chart, these are the results from this past spring, starting with grade three.
Might be important to note just the changeover after twelve.
Correct. So prior to two thousand thirteen, those percentage points, which represent students that meet what's known as the proficiency rate, those tests from two thousand twelve and earlier were pre-Common Core standards. And then obviously two thousand thirteen since, we've been taking a look at how they fare on the tests that are meant to assess the Common Core standard proficiency. Students are graded on a scale of one through four. Students that receive a three or a four are deemed to be proficient towards meeting those standards. Students that would score a level two are working towards meeting those standards. Level one would be students that are in need of improvement towards those standards. So you can see the, the results of the students who sat for the test. This is not representative of every student at, at the grade level because in recent years, not all students have actually taken the test due to the decision to not do so by their families. So at grade three, the students that did sit for the test, fifty percent, half of those students, were deemed proficient scoring at a level three or a four. And then we move across the grade levels from, from three to eight.
So.
Hang on, let's, let's let him get through all the data and then we can ask questions.
Yeah, we can maybe break it down by subject if you'd like. The next chart is, is the same, the same chart, but the, the color coding helps us track a cohort. So students that were in grade three in two thousand fifteen. And then when that, that grade level, now it's, it's important to note that that might not be the exact same students because of decisions to not take the test or students moving in or out. But how did they fare when they were in fourth grade and then the following year? So that's why we presented it this way. This may help us as administrators determine some trends and see, you know, how our students are, are doing year to year. This is the two thousand seventeen data, say a car rate in the red compared to the New York State proficiency rate. So that's what you're seeing in this bar graph by grade level. And here's another representation of student performance on the test, the, the mean scale score. And this is a comparison of Sack Harbor students two thousand sixteen at, say, third grade and then how did they fare the following year. Tests obviously change year to year, so that's, you know, important for us to always keep in mind.
Wait, I'm sorry, can I just have to clarify a question on the graph?
Sure.
So Matt, with, like, let's just take grade three.
Yeah.
Is that, is that the same, that's not the same group of, in other words, the kids that went from three to four?
No.
Okay, I'm confused basically, can you explain the graph?
So, so this, so the black bars represent the grade level result in two thousand sixteen. So, so the red would be the two thousand seventeen result.
Okay, so it's a different set of kids, okay, okay, all right.
I know you want us to wait till the end.
No, we could.
You know what, can I give a, let me clarify on mean versus proficiency too?
Sure.
Can we just, give me a moment, be a data person. Oh, I miss it so much.
Absolutely.
So mean, proficiency is the students that get threes and fours. But a student could get a low three or a high three, you know, because we can accumulate points as we go along. And so a mean score tells us the total points captured across the board. And that can tell us a lot, especially how a grade level has done. So that shows points captured. And I think that the following slide is going to tell us a lot about that. So we could have students that, every student still got, had a three or every student still had a two, but we don't know if they made progress or not. You know, if they got a, did they get a high two? Could they almost have a three? So means, mean scale score tells us a lot. So if you look at that sixth grade that took that jump, is that show that they were, a lot of students, they might have still had, you know, their proficiency might have stayed the same, but their mean scale tells us that the students were capturing greater points. They were, they were performing at a higher level generally, or a lower level generally. And that shows that they were making, that, that gets, that just tells us the grade level progress on how they were doing on the test, on the capturing. Did they, whether they had a high three or a low three, shows the number of points captured. So, sorry.
And I think you always just got one more slide, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And this presents the data in comparison. Again, this is the number of students that took the test that reached that level three or four combined, comparing SAG Harbor in the red at the different grade levels to other schools on the east end of Long Island. And those are noted on the right and color coded and presented at each of the grade levels.
Scott and Stephanie, you have a question?
I, I just think if you look at, what, can you tell us what the percentage opt-out was? Because when you look at a grade level that looks.
It, it did vary.
Low in proficiency, it might have been the biggest opt-out, that's all.
Oh, we have that coming.
I can tell you.
That's, that's coming, the next slide's that.
Do we have enough?
Oh, sorry, okay.
Okay, Janu, you had a question?
No, I just, in regards to opt-outs as well, I just, is this, we're looking at two thousand nine to two thousand ten when the opt-out was inactive?
I'll go back.
Two thousand, I think two thousand twelve was.
No, I'm looking at the difference between two thousand nine and two thousand ten all across.
I, I don't think that's the year that you saw the precipitous drop. The precipitous, statistically, yes, you're accurate, but the precipitous drop when they moved to Common Core was from twelve to thirteen.
Right.
And then what happened is.
Couple years later, the opt-out.
The, the parents reacted to that and then the following year became somewhat of a political issue. There were a lot of things tied to the assessment results and including teacher, proposed teacher evaluation and ratings. So then after that, you had a movement to opt-out, which really, I think, materialized in fourteen fifteen.
Yeah.
So if you go forward like five six.
And it's fluctuating.
You have the number of opt-outs at the, with your last, that one shows your number of opt-outs. And the, the former members can see that on their slides.
Right.
I can't read that.
Something's, something's. Can we ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
I, I just think that as you go through this.
Right.
I mean, it's, and it's really helpful to look at the data, but I would also find really valuable, since you're our educational leaders, to hear from you, you know, whether you think there's an area that, maybe your, maybe the data is not that informative because of the opt-out percentage. But if you do think that there's some, something to be learned from the data, I'd find it really valuable for you to share that, like, here's an error where we still may be fragile and so we're gonna work on creating X or Y or whatever. But how you're translating this data into what might happen in the district.
So I can give you an example of that if we move on to mathematics?
Okay, great.
So we went through a period of time, at least in the sixth and seventh grade, where we were struggling with our mathematics performance. If you look at these two years here, you know, obviously the, the, there were some opt-outs, but we weren't really happy with the levels of, of achievement. So a significant change that we made around that time was we increased instructional time based on some recommendations in terms of what would impact math achievement. We increased it by, I believe it was fifty percent at the seventh grade, and we ended up doubling it at the sixth grade. And so as a result of that, in addition to some other professional development that was offered to teachers, you've seen a, an increase in the mathematics performance at the sixth and seventh grade level, which has in turn shown up in some, some achievement on some regions assessments in high school. I will say though, that it's very hard, and Katie said this earlier and so did Matt, to really draw a lot of meaningful conclusions from the data because it's so incomplete in terms of the percentage of kids who opt out.
Down year to year. Go ahead, Tom, Tom.
And one other thing along with that, Mr. Nichols, is that yesterday, the New York State Board of Regents just passed a, a new set of rules to back up what's coming down from the federal government with the Every Student Succeeds Act. We're adopting the next generation of learning standards. So in two years, we're gonna have three sets of standards and probably three sets of tests on, on, on one graph. So, so thank you for deciphering that. And I don't mean to make light of it, but it is challenging.
No, but that, it's important for us as administrators and of course at the classroom level, the teachers to put this into perspective and use it as one, one piece of that data puzzle that we always.
Thank you.
Try to work through.
Did you have a question? Sorry, I have a question.
I just, I just, I'm, I know we're talking about the two thousand thirteen, but just to be clear, do we have any idea what happened between two thousand nine and two thousand ten?
Two thousand nine and.
I know, I know that in two thousand ten, we adopted the Common Core state standards, but the assessment.
And you had to teach half the standards. You were transitioning at that time. You had to teach half the standards, but they didn't align with the New York State assessment that was being given.
Okay.
And you also saw, yeah, and saw a decrease all over the state.
Thank you.
That was pretty common. Sorry to interrupt. Prior to that, it was the two thousand and five state standards, which they really let you look at everything. And everything was transparent. And then there was, the shift began, and you were just getting hints at what the shift was going to be.
So, yeah, the students didn't change much. The tests changed dramatically.
And the Heidi scores.
You know, it's interesting, Jeff, when you mentioned increasing the math, time with math at those grades, I sat through meetings that you had with parents where there was concern that that was gonna take away a little bit of the E L A, E L L, E L A instruction. But when you look at those numbers, those this year are strong. So it looks like in increasing math, we didn't see a pain point around English.
Not as evidenced in these numbers, no.
Susan, did you have a question?
I, I just had a question. Are you saying, tell me John, that there's another set of assessments on top of all of this that's already done, that's gonna be mandated?
Yeah, the assessments that were developed by, it was called STAR, the company, another company has been hired by the state. And they've actually asked for input from teachers and administrators and, and other educators.
But it's to replace the tests that they're doing. It's not, it's not gonna be a third round of tests.
Right.
Right, okay, okay, okay. Because I was gonna be like, okay, way in the.
On this graph, we will have three different.
But they, they did adopt the new standards, the Board of Regents just, today?
Today.
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 They adopted the next gen standards.
So just going back to the math slide, just to explain, the, the N A piece in the, in grade eight is because we have a lot of students who participate and take algebra in eighth grade, which in and of itself is somewhat of a controversial topic in terms of when you should accelerate students. There are much, there are different opinions about when to do so. Our logic generally is that we want to increase access to upper level math courses, specifically allowing students to get to AP Calculus A B, which they can do if they take algebra in eighth grade. There are some different theories out there as to accelerating students that are different or later in the process that would still allow them to get to Calc A B. And there's, there's some discussions about that that are ongoing. This is just a five-year look at the cohort results, just a different way to look at the data. I think the slides, I'm going backwards.
Yes, sure.
Matt, Jeff, can I ask a question also about the, I, I know there was a lot of discussion before about, previously in years past, about sort of the doubling up in that approach on math. I know we're a small school, but is it ever possible, or might it be a consideration to sort of do a test or pilot where some kids double up, but maybe not everybody does? And there's an option to not double up and see what happens?
We do have those options in terms of course selection. It would be tough to do that, it would be tough to do that at the sixth and seventh grade level.
Like seventh grade ends up with no art, right?
Yes, but they still meet the, they still meet the mandate that New York State puts out. So there are minimum credit requirements that students have to meet, like home and careers and technology and art and Sag Harbor. We exceed that even given what we have. But that's not to say that that issue didn't come up when we moved to increase math instruction. That very issue did come up because up until then, we exceeded art even greater than we do now. Let me sort of move on. This is just the equivalent of what Mr. Malone touched upon before, but with math rather than E L A, looking at Sag Harbor versus New York State. This is the sixteen scores versus the seventeen scores, different student groups. This is some comparative data, looking at how Sag Harbor did versus neighboring districts. And I think again, the validity of these measures is really directly tied to opt-out rates. And so I think you'd have to dive deep into that as well. Percent threes and fours, Mr. Malone talked about one through four being the ratings. This is those students scoring three or fours a percentage compared to other school districts out here. And this is the five-year cohort results on math assessments, three and four. Now, all of these, these middle school assessments sort of lead into what happens in high school. And in high school, there are certain assessments that students have to take to graduate. I like to view the New York State Regents assessments as a, the minimum bar that we shoot for. There are much higher goals that I have for our students, but this is a summary of how we did this past year. The pass rate on Regents assessments is sixty-five or higher. Mastery to achieve that is eighty-five or higher. So when you look at our performance, and we have some longitudinal data that comes in later, we did very, very well across the board. I would say that this particular assessment, I was not happy with this past year. That's geometry, but there is some discussion across the state as to the level of rigor and difficulty with that assessment. So we're in the process of compiling some data to make sure that that perceived weakness is in fact a weakness rather than just an anomaly tied to the difficulty of that particular assessment. This is the, what I just said is over time, so physics, I would put those scores up against, you know, anyone on Long Island, that's a very, very difficult offering. And our pass rate's usually between ninety and a hundred percent and a mastery rate above sixty-five percent. You had the significant switch in algebra several years ago. Our pass rate went up. I'd still like to see our mastery rate continue to rise. Right now, even last year, we had ninety-three percent of the students passing, thirty percent achieving eighty-five or higher on the assessment. Algebra two and, algebra two and trig, since they switched to the common core, we've enjoyed greater success. Once again, I'd like to see those mastery rates higher. I already talked about geometry. English, very, very strong. You are seeing some, some increased difficulty in getting some of our students new to the English language through the Regents. And you saw a little bit of a dip last year in some, in the pass rate. So we went from basically ninety-four, ninety-six down to eighty-six. That is about three students not passing the assessment. So if you had an increase in your, your E N L population, that, that is a tough one. So if a student comes in from another country at, you know, sixteen or seventeen years of age and has to pass that assessment, that's a challenge that is relatively new to Sag Harbor, not necessarily new to some of our neighboring districts. Because they've, they've had some, they've had to deal with that for a little longer than we have.
Jeff, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
When, when someone whose English is a second language, when they come into the district, even if they haven't mastered English or taken necessarily all the coursework to get there, they still have to take the Regents, correct?
We still have certain Regents that they have to get through. There are some exceptions and avenues to, that you can pursue. But in general, they have to pass the English Regents, they have to pass the U S history Regents, they have to pass biology. And I think that is it. Those are the big regions they have to pass.
And a.
Algebra, do they have?
Algebra, right.
Are the Regents given in their native language or in English?
It's in English.
So even if they don't understand English, while they still need to take the exam in English?
So.
I just, I just wanted to bring that up because I knew they had been.
And they have until the twenty-one years of age to get through it. So we have some students who come in late, late in the game at seventeen or eighteen, and they'll stay here until they're twenty-one in pursuit of their diploma.
Okay.
And hopefully, most of them get through. Global studies, we had a strong year last year, specifically our mastery rate. Those percentage of students scoring eighty-five or higher went up. U S history's been strong all along, living environment's been strong. I had a discussion the other day with the biology teachers, which is living environment. We did notice a dip basically from the sixties, close to seventy, down to forty-seven percent mastery last year. We did increase the number of accelerated sections for the first time last year. We had three sections accelerated at the eighth grade versus two. So we're gonna be keeping an eye on that to see if the amount or percentage of students accelerated is, is impacting our ability to keep that mastery rate up, you know, at, at north of sixty percent. But we need to look at that over several years. Earth science, eighty percent, eight out of every ten, eight of ten students scored higher than eighty-five. That's extraordinary. Chemistry, very, very strong. Anytime you can get a chemistry or a physics number above ninety percent as a pass rate as a district, you're doing really well. Wrong way. I'll talk a little bit about advanced placement. There was a significant change after two thousand and twelve. So up until two thousand and twelve, when I came to Pearson in ninety-seven, we had one AP course. So from ninety-seven to two thousand and twelve, we were, we were an AP school. So when you had your students in high school who were, wanted to challenge themselves academically, we had twelve AP courses that students elected to take. We moved to IB, which was a multi-year process. We probably introduced that concept back in like two thousand and eight. It didn't, we didn't get approved and get community support until, I think it was two thousand and thirteen was the first year we offered it. When we switched over from AP to IB, we basically reduced the AP course offerings and replaced them with IB. What's remaining now is AP World History, which is a tenth grade offering, because IB is an eleventh and twelfth grade curriculum. AP Calculus, which is often still the capstone course, regardless of whether you're an IB school or not. So usually, students who are high achieving math students will go IB standard level in eleventh grade at AP Calculus A B in twelfth grade. And there are any more AP offer, oh, AP Statistics, which is a less rigorous option versus AP Calculus we still offer. And AP Government, which is a senior course, which is an option for kids who opt not to take IB History of the Americas in eleventh to twelfth grade. One of this, one of the things to realize is this, is that the students who elected in the past to take AP are now taking IB and the students who remain in the AP pool of students is a different kind of student necessarily.
I have a question about the AP program. Is there, can you explain to me what the guidelines are to get into the advanced placement?
So we have an open enrollment policy for IB and AP courses in our school. So in certain schools, like for instance in Southampton, where my children go, they have a bunch of requirements, prerequisites if you will, that you have to meet in order to be eligible to take a course. The argument being, and I don't necessarily agree with the argument, that if you allow a more heterogeneous group into a classroom, it's gonna take away from the high achievers. What we've proved over time is, when I came here in ninety-six or ninety-seven, that was the way that Pearson was. We had a bunch of hurdles that kids had to cross in, in order to enter an accelerated course. And then we had multiple, I had multiple discussions with faculty which said, hey Jeff, you shouldn't do this because if you do, the performance is gonna suffer because we're gonna have to differentiate our instruction and the kids who really wanna move fast are not gonna be able to move as fast. Well, over time, statistically, that has not proven to be the case. So we, we increased the number of students taking AP courses from ninety-eight to one sixty-five. And the percentage of kids scoring three or higher on an AP exam remained at seventy percent. So it's doable. It's just that you have to set the bar high for your students and spend less time, in my opinion at least, putting effort into building walls and saying instead, hey, what are the resources we need to make these kids successful? And having discussions that center around that. That's a long way to answer your question, but that is our philosophy with IB now. Mr. Guinan and I and Ms. Maria Rias with Middle School Acceleration, I don't even like to use the term acceleration. I just like to see it as an option for students. And even with IB, which I'll get to later on, the percentage of students taking at least one IB course in eleventh and twelfth grade this year is sixty-six percent. That's very, very high. And, you know, I think that's a function of all the good work that the teachers do, but also philosophically where we are at as a school in terms of believing that all students can succeed. but also philosophically where we are at as a school in terms of believing that all students can succeed.
I, I'm all for all students succeeding, but I guess I just have problems when I see seventy-three kids and then eight, and you're only fifty-five percent are ringing and threes or above.
Yeah.
Well, the research tells us that a student, even if they take a A P class and they fail it, the, and this research has been proven over and over again, even if they fail it, it is like exposing them to something that they now know they can achieve. So it's like learning this, this, this success through failure. So they've tried it, having them not try it is the most detrimental thing that can happen to a student. So a student going through their high school life and never trying a college in a classroom class, an A P class or an I B class is the most detrimental thing that we can do. Because if they take a class and they fail it, they intuitively will go, so how did I screw that up? And they'll know, I took a class that was college level. And they've done a tremendous amount of research on this, and they presented this over and over again to the superintendents to say, please, at least have a child try this. Because if they at least try it, it's sort of like why Scared Straight didn't work. When they took students out to visit prisons, the students actually had a higher percentage of going to prison because they thought, ain't so bad. I think I could figure this out.
I, I, I understand the philosophy.
So the exposure is very, very good for the children.
But I also don't think there's anything wrong with a normal kid getting an A in Earth Science, my grade.
No, 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 this is, this is too, you don't pressure them, but if they want to try it, it's really good for them.
I hear what you're saying. Bear in mind that of these forty, of these seventy-three students this year, this past year, or that are, I believe this was seventy-nine, forty-three of them, maybe it's, maybe it's seventy-three actually, forty-three of them are enrolled in A P World History. So roughly sixty-five percent of those kids are tenth graders taking A P World History in grade ten versus Global Studies two. So I think your, your question's a valid question, and we do pose that to students. So when we say we have an open enrollment policy, we have that. But if I have a student who in Global One, which is a ninth grade social studies course, scores like a sixty-eight or sixty-nine, and they elect to take A P World History, I'll sit down with them and say, hey Johnny, you know, I admire the fact that you want to challenge this course, but you got a sixty-eight last year in a Regents level course. And if you bring that level of effort to A P, you're going to do worse. So let's, let's talk it through a little bit. Those are the discussions we have. So. Let me go to the next slide here, I apologize. So these are, remember, A P is limited to these courses now. Physics, we don't offer anymore because we have I B physics. Calculus is the capstone course. This particular year was very disappointing, two thousand and sixteen. I'd like to see us above three because this course, unlike a lot of the other A P courses, is attracting your very best students. Statistics, I'm not happy with this number, but bear in mind that these are not your, the students who are typically challenging A P Calculus or I B standard level math. These are kids who get through Algebra Two and Trig and just want to take one more math that's not as rigorous. And A P Stats has to be, happens to be one of those courses. World History are your tenth grade students. We've seen some growth. And I like the fact that roughly more than fifty percent of our students are taking an accelerated course of study. If our goal is to get students into I B and to increase the number of kids who not only sit for the entire diploma program, but individual courses, these are the kinds of courses where participation has to be pretty high. Government is a senior course. I will be looking at whether or not to offer this moving forward because we've had some, three pretty bad years in a row in terms of how we're performing there.
Jeff, Jeff, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but it would be interesting to know actually what percentage of kids actually passed. You know, you have to get a certain number or higher to consider being passed, right?
Yes, right.
The, the mean doesn't kind of, kind of get you there because, or the average, because you could have a few that do really high, and it might, it might be a small percentage.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, you're saying not the percentage.
Well, not just by subject. It's helpful to know what percentage of kids by subject actually pass the class.
Got it.
Because, you know, if you have a majority not passing the class, then that's another point of discussion, right?
We have that data, yeah. So this is I B. The first year was the highest year. For those of you who are not familiar with I B, it's an eleventh and twelfth grade curriculum. The first year we offered it in twelve thirteen, we had a ninety percent pass rate, but those were only standard level exams, which are exams that are administered after one year of study. So year two, which was thirteen fourteen, you had standard level assessments, which are, which happened after one year of study, and higher level assessments, which take place at the end of the second year of study. So those are inherently more rigorous. So you saw a little bit of a drop, but seventy-six percent is still pretty strong. And what you've seen over the next few years is us hovering right around eighty percent. And this year, you have our largest enrollment in terms of four hundred and four courses being taken, or students enrolled in courses this year. Ninety-three students taking at least one or more courses. So when I said that sixty-six percent of the students in grades eleven and twelve are enrolled in one or more courses, I took the total enrollment, which was one forty-two, put that into ninety-three, and that's how you got sixty-six percent. Another significant thing to notice is, when we first introduced I B, we were very careful to point out not to measure the program by the number of diploma candidates. These are kids who elected and take an entire comprehensive course of study over a two-year period. You can see it ranges from six to fifteen over the first five years. This year, thanks to the efforts of Mr. Guinan, who met with so many students and their, their parents, we are up to thirty-five diploma candidates going into the, to the current junior class. That's very impressive. When we first introduced this and we were trying to model it after schools like Rockville Center, we hoped to get close to fifty percent. I, I said after five to seven years. And thanks to Mr. Guinan, I, we're, we're pretty close. I'll go over a little bit of the assessment data. So in I B, unlike A P, you're graded one through seven versus, and in A P it's one through five. In A P, a passing score is generally considered three or higher. In I B, it's considered four or higher. I won't go through every subject, but you can look at fourteen through seventeen, what those pass rates are. An area of concern for us is French, despite the fact that there were only two students who took the exam last year over a four-year period. That's not one of our stronger areas. I think last year was a little bit of a dip. And we're getting some, some feedback from the I B in History of the Americas, usually one of our strongest areas. But you guys can look at the rest. There was a significant, one more comment, there was a significant increase in music. We had a new instructor last year who restructured the course in its first year and enjoyed a lot of success. This is the average score by subject.
Jeff, is there a computer science I B course with an exam?
No, we, our sequence right now, at least as it pertains to Pearson, is A P Computer Science and then followed by I B Computer Science, is that right?
Yeah.
And so we did have.
Please don't see it on the list.
We had, we had those scores.
We had scores in two thousand and sixteen for a higher level, but they're now offering standard level computer science with A P as a prerequisite. We did not include it on this.
We did not include it, but those scores were very strong.
The I B Computer Science high level?
Yes.
Were not.
Were not. So Jason's scores that he sent us were A P last year?
A P scores were strong this year, which is what we're building now in A P to I B pipeline. And those A P scores were strong.
That's what I was referring to. So this is a look at, to get an I B diploma across the six subject areas, you have to be twenty-four or higher. So the first year we offered it, two thousand and fourteen, which was the cohort at the end of their second year, the average was twenty-six. Over the last four years, it's trended upwards to north of thirty. The black line represents the worldwide diploma average score. I said the green line represents the passing score.
Wait, could you explain that to me again?
Sure.
The, the note for the two thousand and seven, it's changing from twenty-four to thirty?
No, the, the note is that the two thousand and seventeen I B worldwide data hasn't been released yet. So it will, that's why the black line stops short on the graph. But it, it ranges between thirty and thirty-two historically. So for the past two years, the students who do the diploma here have been outscoring the international language, which is our goal.
That could be a commercial.
That is our goal.
I think we should make that a commercial.
So this is the A C T data. So some schools are test optional, but the majority of schools nowadays still require students to commit either the A C T or the S A T. This data is valuable, but it's not as valuable as the S A T data because the sample size is much smaller. Last year, only nineteen students in, or this year, nineteen students. Took it thirty-seven the previous year. The S A T participation rate is higher. But having said that, we're doing very well. You can see our average, and this comes directly from A C T and reference it to the, to the average state scores. So in English, math, reading and science, we are above the state averages. And then when you average those out, our composite is a one point four, I believe, points above the state average.
So when we're looking at sixty-two, oh, sorry, back to the S A T data.
I'm going to that next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. This one?
Yeah.
Okay. So sixty-two students were assessed. Some of those students are going to be, I think this data was from last year's graduating class. So this is the average that appears in our college profile that was sent to Newsday. And this is just some comparative data that I've referenced to East End districts. I think the next slide is actually more valuable. This makes us look good. Our students are performing at a high level.
I'm sorry, Jeff, that's, fifteen eighty-six was the average of the sixty-two kids that took it?
In the graduating class of two thousand and seventeen.
Correct.
So even though kids take it, many kids take it in eleventh grade, some take it in twelve, you just took the cohort in twelfth grade?
So these are only seniors who took it?
Right.
No.
I think that the sixty-two students, the number of students who were tested is a cohort number. So that's one group that was traveling through. Because at any given time, you have eleventh graders and twelfth graders taking the S A T.
And that's the highest score out of, if they took them multiple times, right? I just got an education today about this. Okay.
It's called the super score. So some schools will allow you, when you apply to college, to take the different, your highest math and combine it with your highest verbal. And in the A C T, the core composites, they'll allow you to mix and match. And other schools will only take one sitting and not allow you to do that. And you have to go to each school's website and look. I thought this was valuable because this is, if you've grown up on Long Island or you're familiar with Long Island District, this is Newsday's ranking of how our students did on the S A T versus, and this chart went all the way down here. I just put the top of it up here. Sag Harbor is pretty high. And when you look at a lot of the Nassau school districts, Garrettville and Hassett, Great Neck, Roslyn. When you get down into the Suffolk County schools, you've got Three Village, Harborfields, Port Jeff, Half Fall Hills, you've got West Hampton, you've still got some Nassau districts in here, and then Sag Harbor. So we're pretty high in terms of where we are on, on, in Suffolk County versus your S A T scores. Obviously, we want to shoot to continue to rise, and I'd like to be up here eventually. So it's, there is a bit of a different demographic in some of the suburban communities outside of Manhattan. Certainly not an excuse for someone to be aware of as it pertains to referencing our population to theirs.
Jeff, I just have a really quick question. Since the code is on here, it shows that those are for three different tests as part of the S A T. Is the blue the reading, the green the math, and the purple the writing?
That I don't know.
I can send the link on to the board members.
I, I would just be curious because it looks like, it looks like the first one, if it's the critical reading, it's about on par, but the other two, particularly the last one.
Right.
Which, I don't know, just curious.
It is reading, math, writing, left to right.
Reading, math, writing, okay. So it's, it's looks like we're a little short on math and, and writing is an issue.
So if I count, okay, we're twenty-eight out of the ninety-eight districts in the chart. It says our ninety-eight.
That's a commercial and the headlines.
And the, these are Nassau and Suffolk County.
And again, if you took that S A T data in reference, and I don't want to say that the demographics in these communities are the same as ours, they're not, but this is a different perspective to look at when you're looking at a lot of the districts that are out here. So anyway. I believe that's it. So I can answer any questions. I know you guys have been asking questions all along.
Any other questions?
I have a question. There seems to be a discrepancy between A P and I B. Do you at some point have some sort of recommendation that we should scrap A P and go with I B? Or do we keep A P for the kids who really aren't ready for I B?
So, so, so I probably didn't do a good job of explaining it.
I am like on so much cold medicine right now, so.
So that discussion, like your question, do we scrap A P and move to I B? That discussion happened from like two thousand and seven to two thousand and twelve. And the, the, at that time, the community was weighing the merits of each program, and there was some heated debate about whether to go to I B or not. I was a big proponent of going to I B. There was a lot of opposition. We ultimately moved. But when we did move, we said at the time that the A P program would disappear, with the exception of courses that we could still offer that didn't interfere with the I B program. So there are some courses out there that our students can still access that make sense, that can coexist with I B. So one of them is A P World History, which is a tenth grade offering. I B doesn't have any tenth grade offerings in a diploma program. Another is A P Calculus, which in the opinion of most math people is the appropriate gold standard math course for a high achieving senior. So in I B, you could go from standard level in eleventh grade to higher level in twelfth grade. That's def, that's not something that the majority of districts do. They go from standard level in eleventh to A P, A P Calc, A B in twelfth grade. So those two situations make sense for the A P courses to remain. The other two, which are A P Statistics and A P Government, are more about providing almost elective opportunities for students outside of the I B program. So for a student, for instance, who took regular U S history in eleventh grade, but want to get a taste of a college course in twelfth grade, the only offering with, for them in the social studies arena would be offering A P Government. Because they can't go into I B History of the Americas theoretically as a standard level student, as a senior. It really wouldn't make sense for them. And then the final course, which is A P Stats, is that the final one? Yes. For students who get through Algebra Two and Trigonometry, which is basically your last New York State mandated math course, the options at that point are to go into I B standard level math, which is essentially pre-calc with, with a little bit more of a, a broader reach, if you will. A lot of students will find that too rigorous, and they'd rather go into a course that has some credentials attached to it, but is not as rigorous. And A P Stats represents that. Other students might take I B standard level math in eleventh grade, think they're going to take A P Calc, get to the end of eleventh grade and say, there's no way I want to take A P Calc, it's too hard, and then go into A P Stats. So that's why we have those four cross-course offerings. I do struggle with keeping A P Stats and A P Government when the average score achieved on those A P assessments. when the average score achieved on those AP assessments is just north of 2. That is a little bit of an internal debate that we have as administrators as to whether or not to, to continue to offer those courses. But we have to temper that with the students who are taking those courses are not the students who generally are scoring as high on your other tests, like SATs and ACTs, as the students who would be taking IB standard level math and AP Calc or IB History of the Americas.
The other thing about the Stats course is it doesn't have the same prerequisite skills as AP Calc. So if the student was theoretically struggling in Algebra II, they could still take AP Stats and, and the other, the other point I just wanted to make is that when we, when we think about skills that students need in college or in career, I mean, we've all looked at data tonight. And most of us have to look at data in our careers, whereas very few of us actually have to do calculus in our careers. So it might make sense to hang on to Stats for, if nothing else, that purpose. Just because it, it has a, a broader scope of applicability than calculus does.
Right, and when, yes, most definitely. And the other thought is that if the students don't take IB standard level, the, the options for them, if they don't take AP Stats, could be IB Math Studies, which is not as rigorous as AP Stats, or Consumer Math. And I would rather have our students sit, I believe, and challenge AP Stats than sit for either of those two courses because they're still developing. We still don't know if something's going to click, so.
Any other questions for our administrators? Go ahead.
I have a question, and this might be more for the superintendent. A couple of people spoke during public comment about perhaps we ought to have a more robust discussion about the IB Middle Years program. And I agree, I think we do need a more robust discussion. I know that was talked about in the spring, but I think there's some important issues that weren't discussed. Can you just say when the deadline is for that decision to be made? Or maybe that is from Mr. Nichols, I don't, I don't.
No, I, I don't mind speaking to it.
Yeah, never mind.
So when we talked to the board, at least this was my impression. So if I, and, and my, if I'm saying something that doesn't match the individual board member's recollection, I apologize. But my recollection of it was that when we presented our summary of the IB NYPD to the board, our recommendation was that we saw merit in the program. That the program itself had a lot of good foundational concepts that were embedded in it. But that over the course of our investigation into pursuing accreditation and the right to offer the program, the IB sort of changed the game on us and made participation in the program much more cumbersome for school districts in terms of the things that they asked us to do in terms of structures in the building, some of which were going to present, uh, challenges to us that we, I'm not sure we could achieve in terms of contractual limitations. And the other thing that also changed significantly was the introduction of assessments on the part of the IBO, International Baccalaureate Organization, with regard to NYPD. And our estimate as to the cost of those, Ms. Carriera, was about $250,000?
Yeah.
Per year. So our recommendation to the board at the last time we spoke to it, I didn't say that correctly, the last time we spoke to you, was that we could pursue those foundational concepts and the tenants of the program that we found very, very attractive, but do so without pursuing the, the NYPD. Because at the end of the day, the NYPD, unlike a diploma program, doesn't really award you something that's meaningful as it relates to college admission or credential. And our end goal was just to increase the number of students to access the DP program. And we felt we could do that without some of the costs and some of the challenges related to the contractual limitations that the recent changes the IBO presented to us.
What's the deadline?
There is, there is no, there is no deadline. We didn't, we did not submit the candidate fee based on our discussion with the spring to the IBO for NYPD authorization. If the board were to decide that, hey, now, those Pearson Middle School, we want you to go forward again with NYPD authorization, what would have to happen is we would have to contact the IBO and say, hey, we want to re-enter the candidate phase and submit a, the yearly or annual candidate fee to the IBO, which is about $11,000. And then go through the process that we were in the midst of going through, which we've already gone through with DP. So that's something that we remain open to. And if you guys want to discuss it further, we'd have, we'd be happy to go into greater detail about it.
I, I just have one question about that is, is there any option of just doing grades nine, 10, not doing the entire middle school?
They do provide, they changed that to six through 10. There's some flexibility with regard.
There's flexibility with, in regards to if you're not of one school from a sixth or 12th building. There's flexibility if it's a high school only and the feeder, like, middle school.
And I understand it's not an all or nothing program as well.
Yeah. And we, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, I, I was going to say two things. They do provide flexibility with regard to how, how you sequence it in. Like, do you start with one grade level and then carry it through each subsequent year? Or you start with all five grade levels at once?
That's when you're in the authorization stage.
Right. And then the second thing I would say is that if we were to offer it, the expectation on the part of the IBO is that it's a program for all students.
Yep.
All of us. Can, can, can I make a, a suggestion? I think there are, there are others in the community that would love to be potentially a part of this conversation. Does it make sense to put on an upcoming agenda sooner versus later if possible? This is a topic, so it can be a more structured conversation and the public could be engaged if they wanted to.
My recollection was, and I know you aren't here, but Chris, you and I were very vocal because we were taken by surprise.
The whole board was taken by surprise.
Yeah, you're right, yes, I'm sorry, I apologize. We were taken by surprise a little bit that we were veering away from something that we said we were marching toward. But I also think that we spent a sufficient amount of time really listening to Mike and Jeff and I, and I, and, and Brittany. Am I supposed to use his last name? Sorry, I respect you all. To the point where I, if you roll back a video, I think I very rudely on purpose said, hey, it sounds like we're being lazy or something and we just don't want to do this. But the, the, the final outcome in, in what I remember to be hours of discussion was that their recommendations of extra testing, which everybody, you just said it. What do you mean, is there another test? And please don't leave here saying the board of it spent money somewhere else and didn't, on, on. But the logic behind us not wanting to pursue that was explained. Did you not feel that at the end?
Yeah, I, I was on the board at the time, but I, I, I felt there was a good presentation and some research that had been done, but there were a lot of subjects that were not addressed, such as what curriculum is going to be available, if we have it, versus if we don't. What's going to be the impact to the kids in the diploma program if we have it versus if we don't? I, I thought, I just looked on the website, but I thought there was an option to do just nine and 10. So I think Chris's point is a really good one, and I think we ought to have a more robust discussion about this.
I, and I, I agree, and my recollection at the end of that conversation was I did not get the will of the board as to what direction they wanted to go, even though we did receive the recommendation from the administration. And that we were going to revisit it in the fall. My understanding was that, that we would revisit it before the fee was due. So, and the superintendent and I have had it on our list of things to put on the agenda. But I think moving it up on the list makes a lot of sense.
And tell me folks about it.
Absolutely.
So, so I guess for a future date to be determined very soon, Brittany, Mike, and I will come back with a comprehensive presentation on NYPD, the implications for having it here, the implications for not having it here, and some of the key considerations as you as a board deliberate on pluses and minuses. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the one thing I would ask from my trustees is if there are specific questions that you would like information, if you wouldn't mind just jotting me an email so that I can forward it to the administration so they, they present the information we're looking for. Go ahead.
I just had two quick questions to that. I completely agree with Chris and Alex on this. I think it's something that's worthwhile to be revisited. And, and at least in terms of what your comments were, Jeff, that there were a couple of things that I still felt confused about. So that, don't trust your guys' recommendation, of course we do. But I, I would like to under, get a better handle on the understanding of when you mentioned sort of the contractuals, the issues that you didn't think we could meet, just for us to be clear on what are we talking about, what are those? And the other is the fees that you mentioned, I was like, whoa. Are those flat fees no matter what the size of the school is? Or does IB have any kind of sliding scale given one's enrollment?
Well, they're generally per student fees.
It's per student, okay, so it is a sliding scale, face on the numbers, okay.
Which is similar to, to, to the formal program in terms of how they charge you for assessments and a registration fee per student. But what we'll do is, and we'll make sure we do it, hopefully even more thoroughly than we did last time, we'll lay all those fees out so you see exactly what they are. And we'll also go over the specific challenges for our school culture in terms of the processes that NYPD demands of schools. So for instance, if they say that, you know, we need to have grade level meetings every day or something like that, I'm making something up. How does that mesh with the daily schedule of the Pearson teacher? And is it workable within our schedule? And we'll just map that out to you guys so you have a comprehensive picture and everybody else who's in the audience.
I think that would be helpful.
And, and I don't know if the data exists, but if there is data that shows that schools that have a Middle Years program implemented for a period of time, if that has impacted their success rate at the upper years, that would be helpful to know. And I know that, that the, the Plan B, which was the recommendation, was implementing a lot of those techniques and benefits. But I do think that if there's, if there's hard data that reflects whether you have it or not, that would be really helpful to see.
So I'll send the board a reminder so that you can kind of reflect and think about what questions you have and what data you'd like presented and all those sorts of things, and we'll pass that on to them for, for important.
And also if maybe they can share anything that they recommend that we read about that particular part. I mean, I know we're fully on IB, but particularly on the Middle Years and the advantages of it. And anything in the terms of the difference between that and what we offer currently, and a clear understanding of what emerged thing without the costs, but the hopeful advantages would be and look like.
And since we're kind of talking about it, if you, to the best of your ability, tell us which teach, the number of teachers that teach IB courses and teach lower level courses in our school district.
Very high number, but yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our administrators? Brittany, do you want to add anything?
No, no, that's very helpful. I think, I think we were in that transitioning out and transitioning in, so I think that would be helpful. The questions in advance would be helpful because pulling that information on the blog is challenging.
Public input too? Anybody for public input too?
Before we adjourn, I do have a question if you'll miss. It looked like, I don't know if it was this afternoon or yesterday, but it looked like our, our third agenda item, the Stella Maris project update by BCK Architects was called. I noticed, I just noticed something an hour before I came here, so I apologize for not emailing you this question. The last time they were here, May 31st, according to the meeting minutes, the architects reported on discarding this. That 6.3 million would include all the items the public voted on, but the board will have to make some decisions on the final plans to be submitted to the State Education Department by the end of August. Here we are, the middle of September, and we're not on the agenda yet. But at that meeting, we, we confirmed with them, they'd have to come back by the end of August, update, present more, so we give them the feedback to keep our deadline. So has the deadline changed now for them?
I, I, I didn't get, we didn't get some time, so I asked them to have a little bit more time with Jennifer and I to vet some of the numbers that they had and some of the items that we needed to work through. New York State Department of Education has realized that they have a backlog. They have become very transparent that it can sometimes be up to over 30 months. So what they've put in place is an expedition. So a school district can pay a fee to have their work expedited, basically to have a consultant work.
It's a racket.
It's a racket. But well, it's.
It's part of the life house.
Well, I'm sorry. But we can put it in our containment fees, and it's a very reasonable price, from what they're saying. So it's, it's, and I, I'll get the exact number so the board has that. But I felt like because of what we went through, and this, I'll communicate this all because I was just, I learned all this in the last week when I talked to them about postponing this, is that now New York State has realized that this is putting school districts in a very difficult and often physically challenging position, which Sag Harbor Schools was in with our 2013 bond. Jennifer, can you tell me exactly how many months we were in?
Long enough to grow grass.
Yeah, the, the paperwork was actually sent to SED in the beginning of December, and it didn't get approved until the next January. So you're talking December of 14, it didn't get approved till January of 16.
Yeah.
So my, my question more is they, they gave us a deadline of the end of August. Does that deadline, has that changed now?
So what, by working through this, this facilitator, we're fine. We're, we're, we're not, we're not going to miss any deadlines. So they're going to be coming to us on October 2nd. But I've also learned from our community, when you present something, it better be right. So we needed, we simply needed more time with the architects because we needed to condense some of the project work that they were doing.
That's great, so the August deadline is now in October, so later day, if you've missed any deadline, we'll still have the opportunity.
That's right, yeah, yeah. And I, and I really appreciate you pointing that out because we should have, because there are folks that looked at the agenda that didn't have that.
Can I clarify that? Like, in my, my, my striving for the few months I've left here to be clear, the, we haven't missed any deadlines.
No.
And October 2nd is when we're going to hear it, and the presentation will be perfect rather than hearing it today. But it will cost us the fast pass price like at Disney World.
Yes, and we will be very transparent with the, with the.
What that fast pass price is.
Yes.
So we are spending, it might be only $35.
But it's.
But it is going to be.
But it is going to be part of, it's going to be part of the, the, the project cost. It'll be, it will be.
It'll be part of the soft cost.
Yeah.
Those are soft costs. Yeah, the only concern was because they were adamant with us, and they had to be back by August to get our feedback.
Soft cost, just a soft cost.
And not delay the project. They're telling us it won't be delayed, and that's good.
If we're not, can I also ask a question before you go? I know this has been a can of worms in the past, so, but a little birdie told me that in the sixth grade recess, there isn't a recess because apparently a lot of the kids are sitting there on their phones during recess. Can we revisit the cell phone issue and maybe take the temperature of parents, a member of whom on orientation day, the second orientation day, thank you so much to the administrative team, said to me, you know, what is this with cell phones and that? So I just wonder if it's worth taking the temperature of that group of parents and if there's something we can address because if the kids aren't running around. And so that little birdie told me that he ended up reading a book outside because he couldn't get anybody to play because they were on their phones. So if that's true, we need to address it, I hope.
But, but, I'm sorry, but they didn't disallow the children from going outside. Where are they going outside for, and stuff on the ground?
I have a picture of it today, the sixth grade outside picture.
I think, I think, can I just say one thing in regards to, there are three policies that need to review, be reviewed yearly. Katie and I were getting it together.
Yeah.
Code of Conduct needs to be reviewed like yesterday.
Yep, annually.
I think that's something that we can maybe tackle in the policy side.
Well, I, um, policy is law, so I would really put cellphone under protocol, procedure handbook item. That's where I would put that. But I think that we do have our, and I've seen Brittany down every single day because I can see it right outside my window. She's been out at recess every single day. Do you want to go ahead?
So, um, what we did last year, I could speak of, and since I've been here, we transformed the policy depending on the grade cohort.
Let's use the word protocol because it's not a thought, protocol.
Protocol, each pro, like the cellphone protocol in the sense that each grade cohort comes with a different level of maturity depending on how advanced they are with technology. And there is research on the brain as well as each adolescent matures at a different rate. And some people are risk takers and are able to put their phones away right away, even adults, while other people aren't. So it's a teaching in moment. What we did last. What we did last year, which I think worked, was we surveyed the parents, and we revisited the protocol depending on what the parent cohort wanted. So each grade cohort seemed to want different things, and each parent, so I could do that again, if that's what we see. We're having a sixth grade town hall meeting, I believe, on the 20th, and that's when that discussion happened, and that's where we, how we reacted in the middle school.
Okay, I just, I heard it from a couple parents, but then I heard it from a bird.
No.
So anyway, I just thought it was very creative.
They're having fun, they're going out.
They're going out.
Remember, so to them, when they come to the elementary, there's no cellphone. They get a cellphone when they're in sixth grade. It dissipates after a while, too. And yes, there will be kids that are obsessed with it, which we will find out very soon, and we let the parents know right away. I have several students from sixth grade on who hand in their phones at the beginning of the day, because that's the protocol they want their child to have. And we're open to that, because each parent wants different things for their child, and a cellphone, and we respect that.
Does that address your concern?
Yes, are we gonna, they're, so they're gonna survey the parents, and we're gonna re, do you feel like it's addressed? Any concern you might have?
Well, I, I actually would support a revisitation of the way we handle cellphones in general. I work in districts all over the country. And one of the districts that I work in is a K to eight building, and the kids turn in their phone in the morning and pick it up in the afternoon. And at lunch, the kids are talking to each other. And part of their school culture is they teach each other to look each other in the eye when they're talking to each other, and to use, like, they teach them all of these things explicitly. So I would be open to revisiting our protocol, not just for one cohort, but overall. I guess maybe if, maybe we'll just take the will of the board, if this is something that we, we want to tackle either with shared decision-making or with the policy committee, or, but in general, this is something we want to tackle. So Tommy John?
Cell phones?
Yep.
Oh, man.
Yeah, absolutely, we, we, sure, we can tackle it.
All right, Stephanie?
I have a Robert's Rules cheat sheet. To my answer, I'm allowed to interrupt the speaker, and I object to consideration of this question.
Okay, Alex?
I think that it's a good point. Technology's changing really fast. Cellphone is a different thing today than it was a year ago, and it'll probably be a different thing another year. I think us having a robust discussion to notify the public about it of a new cellphone policy perhaps would be a good idea.
Notifying the public of our decision.
No, that we're gonna talk about it.
Notifying the public of a robust discussion.
Yes, we can say we're gonna have an agenda item on X date, and people can show up and talk about it, and we can talk about it, and see if there may be a need for a, a new policy. Maybe not.
Chris?
Was it last year or the year before that the shared decision-making committee of the high school spent a good part of the year having this be one year?
The year before.
Year before last. So it was assigned to, from the board to the shared decision-making committee two years ago. As it turns out, I was not an advocate for their recommendation, but I have to respect that process. I was an advocate for less cellphone during the day on every grade level, and it not being used as a teaching tool, as it is in many classes in the high school. But I also want to respect the process. So if it's gonna be on the agenda, I think we also, to have people be on committees, work all year on something, and then flip on that also would be kind of hard. So I just ask that we take that into consideration.
Trying to point out information.
Uh, oh, go ahead.
I just, I just want to know what you're talking about, because I want to look at that report that they did.
No, it was a recommendation, do you know what, the share, the law requires shared decision-making.
Right, so I assume there was a.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So was there like a presentation or something? Because I want to know what their, what their decision was, what their.
They don't make decisions, they make recommendations to the board.
What was our recommendation?
I want to know what the recommendation is.
Okay. The recommendation to the board, if you want to highlight it, was allowing cellphones in many grades.
Yeah, I think the recommendation at the time was to allow cellphones in school, with, with the thinking being that technology is here to stay, and that, you know, banning it, which was what was being called for by many people in the community, was not something that the committee supported. And the committee was comprised of students, teachers, administrators, and parents. But I think Mr. Pragman makes a good point, that, you know, certainly technology's changing at a pretty rapid pace, and if that's a discussion that the board wanted to have, we can certainly have it again. You know, it's the community's decision as to what they want to do. We can make, you know, administrators can make recommendations, but ultimately, the community decides.
I think, I think that, no, I'm going back to your point, Susan. I think the, the concern of, comes around the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And there is a, we did, we have a, a middle school shared decision-making committee, and perhaps that's where the real concerns lie. I think by the time children are ninth grade, we assume they're navigating their world. So perhaps, you know, I, I, I'm just reluctant to, to do committee work at the board level, but have the shared decision-making do that committee work. Do see them saying, and let them, and then let them report back to us. But keep them in a, in a fairly tight timeframe if we can, so it doesn't linger. Because I, I think there, there is concerns that, you know, get the survey out, get, and so the board give them a timeframe on.
But I think the reason I mentioned the point of taking the temperature of the sixth grade parents is I do think that among parents, this issue's viewed differently. And I was obviously part of those discussions in the past about the cellphones, and I think it's pretty well known where I stand on them. My son doesn't have one. But the, but I think taking that temperature and seeing where they are, and then just exploring some of the issues that might be occurring, and maybe there is a different view. For example, and maybe, Brittany, you're right, that it calms down, but, you know, if it, if the presence of them is completely disrupting recess, so that the kids are just sitting there on their phones rather than playing, which they need to move, that's a problem, especially in the younger grades. So I don't think anyone's really sort of making too much of an issue about the high school, but I am hearing from middle school students, parents, I'm sorry, and particularly sixth grade. So I just think it's worth, at least for that, take the temperature, look at some of the issues, have a discussion, bring the community in. You know, you don't have to call it policy. I won't mention policy ever again.
Well, I, I just say.
It can be underneath the policy, frankly.
I, I think that we should table this discussion, and, for a night when everybody can weigh in and we can get the.
Let's get it on the agenda.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
But, but it was brought up today about the shared decision-making committee. Do, do, what is the status of the committee? Because I know we're in the middle of the session.
Uh, next meeting.
Are we gonna talk about committees in the next meeting?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, good.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?